I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting of November twenty first, two thousand twenty-three, to order and ask everyone to put their cell phones on silence. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Schroeder and the pledge by Councilman Nesser.
Definitely Father, we thank you for the opportunity to conduct city business on behalf of its citizens. We ask you to keep a watchful eye out for our first responders, including the police, EMS, firefighters, and we ask that you give joy to everybody in the City of Apache Junction and around us. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Did you say roll call? I'm sorry.
Yeah, roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nesser?
Present.
Councilmember Soller?
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved in one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request must be made prior to approving the consent agenda, and we move to new business. Do I have a motion for consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the agenda be accepted and the consent items be approved as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Awards and present proclamations. I have one here for a Small Business Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. The City of Apache Junction celebrates our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are over thirty-two point five million small businesses in the United States. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven percent of the employees in this private sector in the United States, eighty-eight percent of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And ninety-two percent of small business owners have changed the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas ninety-seven percent of Small Businesses Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they make by shopping small businesses, eighty-five percent of them also encourage friends and family to shop local in small businesses. And whereas advocating groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three as Small Business Saturday. Aaron McDermott? I'll come down there.
Maybe a couple steps back in the good light. We want to see the...
Aaron, up here on the, on the pedestal.
Yeah, there you go, right there.
He should stand up in the middle and...
Yeah, well, I'm...
You can't.
Aaron represents the Chamber of Commerce Board and is a man of many words, Aaron.
Successful.
Thank you for coming.
Keep rolling. Keep rolling. Okay. Regional intergovernment updates. Does any council member have anything they want to bring up?
Well, Your Honor, maybe I will.
Yes, okay.
A number of council members, as well as the mayor and vice mayor, had the opportunity to tour the Republic Services landfill. And last week, it was most informative. And it was very helpful to learn how they handle all of the trash that comes in, and it's a lot. But also the, the steps that are taken to ensure that the ground is protected, that the, that the, any liquid runoff at all is, is, is kept away from the soil. It was very helpful. And they have a, they have a real plan for how they're going to continue to operate that landfill until it's closed. So I think it was, I never had that much in-depth knowledge. So I, I know a lot about trash now.
Anyone else? For those of you who are unaware, five Army service members died on November tenth in a training session over the Mediterranean Sea. One of the fallen was Sergeant Andrew Southart, who went to the junior high and high school here in Apache Junction and graduated from the Apache Junction High School in two thousand fifteen. He went into the Army right after graduation and had an impressive career in this few short years. He passed a numerous of certifications, earned many awards and declarations. He was a member of the Army Special Operations Forces, part of an elite hundred and fifth-sixtieth, excuse me, hundred and sixtieth Special Operations Aviation Regiment. He leaves behind a wife and two children. Last week, the city lowered its flags in the, in his, to half-staff in his honor. And we requested and received a condemnation from Governor Katie Hobbs' office in his honor. Flags at the State Capitol be lowered on Saturday to coincide with services for Sergeant Southart that will be taking place in Tennessee. We convene our condolences to Sergeant's friends, families, and thank him for his service. May he rest in peace. May we have a moment of silence for Sergeant Southart and the four other service members that died this past week. Thank you. Speaking of veterans, Veterans Day, I had the pleasure of doing some major speaking to all the veterans in our community. We also had a parade that honored the veterans and Superstition Festival. We also had the Superstition Horsemen's Association, and our pony gave rides to ninety-seven kids on that day. So a lot of them got an opportunity to ride a pony. And one of them was, she rode seven times. She just so much enjoyed it. But it was an opportunity to, you know, recognize our veterans and what they have done. We had many different, I would say, veterans from each one of the branches of service that were honored in their time that they had served. And it was an opportunity to basically show what our veterans are about. Today, at Gateway Airport, we had a very short meeting. Shortest meeting I think I've ever sat in. We were in there for five minutes and done. But we ended up getting a wonderful tour of the new Gateway, the gate access. They're going to have ten gates now. Right now, they got four of them in a temporary facilities, but this is the new facilities that they've got, which will be opening in February. And it was very impressive, very, I'm going to say, really open. So it, you know, gave you plenty of room. And the walkway between the two sections of the Gateway, the old part and the new part, is going to be a glassed area, which will also be able to, people go outside and sit, I would say, in desert plants and enjoy the, the tail end of their vacation before they get on a plane and go back to wonderful cold areas. So it was impressive and, and was great. Okay. Bryant.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. And for my report tonight, I'll start off with reading a prepared statement. We want to pass along our deep appreciation of our police department after the announcement last week of the identification of an unknown victim of more than thirty years ago. Police Chief Mike Pooley and Crime Technician Stephanie Bourgeois told reporters on Friday that the body found in the desert of Apache Junction in the summer of nineteen ninety-two has been identified as fifteen-year-old Melody Harrison of South Phoenix. It is so gratifying to see our department bring some resolution to the family of this girl more than three decades after her disappearance. You can read about this case or the case on our homepage and in our media story online, online. Thank you, Apache Junction Police Department. Your Honor, this has been something, as you know, we've been working on a long time. And as technology has advanced, we're very, very proud of the men and women of the Apache Junction Police Department. Took a team effort for a long time.
That's amazing. It is.
And tonight, we are very excited to turn the time over to Chief Mike Pooley. We have some very important and special introductions. And then after that, Chief, we've got some more. Turn it to you.
Mayor, Members of Council, it's really exciting to be here today for a couple of reasons. I want to wish you and everybody a happy Thanksgiving, first off. But I'm thankful for a lot of things. But one of the things I'm really thankful for is I got a full command staff now. So I want to introduce you to our newest members. If you guys can come up here. This is Commander Michael Beaton. He comes from the Mesa Police Department. He started with us two weeks ago, and, or last week he started with us. And he is an icon in the Mesa Police Department and in the City of Mesa. Brings a ton of knowledge and experience. And I couldn't have asked for somebody better to head our operations. He's going to be over patrol, and we're excited for that. And I'll let him speak here in just a second. And on my right is Commander Cindy Uer from the University of Arizona. But she is an ASU grad, so that's a good thing. We took that into consideration.
Touchy week.
No, no offense, Brad.
Big week.
Big week.
Yeah.
But Cindy also comes very highly recommended amongst her peers and her supervisors and people that worked with her in the University of Arizona. She's very well-respected, well-known in law enforcement. And I couldn't have asked for another better person to lead our criminal investigations. So they bring both with them, respect, knowledge, and they got the best demeanor. They're here to serve the citizens, residents of Apache Junction, and I couldn't be more excited. And I'll let each of them say something real quick.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much. Chief Pooley's too kind. You've put together a dream team of law enforcement professionals here. I'm just excited to serve with them. And in my first week and two days here, the people of Apache Junction have been incredible. I am so excited to be working here. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Welcome.
Hello. This is my first city council meeting I've ever been to, so this is exciting for me. I'm very excited to serve the citizens of Apache Junction. The minute I stepped foot in the city weeks ago when I started this process, I fell in love with every single person I met, whether it's the people at the dog park or the restaurants I visited. This is a great city, and I am so excited to serve. I am used to college students, so this is going to be a little bit of a different environment for me. But I really, I really love interacting with the community and being with, with the citizens. So I'm excited, and I appreciate your support of the police department.
Thank you all. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
And, and let's see, Matt, the next slide should have, we are, well, a couple of things here.
Yeah, so this, this next thing, we have a video we're going to show you. And some of you were at the Faith in Blue event that we hosted last month. It's a national event that law enforcement meets with different congregations, different churches, and we have a big community event. We had two community events this last year, or this last month. We had seven, six churches in, in Apache Junction, and we had close, over six hundred people attend these events. The reason this is so important because we get to know people, and we get, bring our officers in. We come in and we really get to just hear what's going on there. There's a lot of service that's given. We were able to fill our, our Bearcat full of toys. All of those toys, everything was given to the Salvation Army. And now they can use that for this upcoming holiday season. But one of the things that we were recognized for, it was an international award, which was last month in, in San Diego, where we were recognized for two awards internationally. One was for one of our lieutenants, Danny Saldana, who's a homegrown Apache Junction prospector graduate, who's now one of our lieutenants. And he was recognized as one of the forty under forty internationally. There's, there's over thirty thousand members of the International Association of Chiefs of Police organization. And he was recognized as one of the upcoming future leaders and leaders in law enforcement. And as far as this other award, we were recognized for community policing. They give one award to one law enforcement agency in the entire world. And the Apache Junction Police Department was a recipient of that award this, this last month in San Diego. And I couldn't be more proud of the men and women of our department, our sworn, our professional staff. And that's a credit to what you have all allowed us to do. So we appreciate that. And I'll let you enjoy this video real quick.
There is sound, but I'm not sure why it's not. Oh, here you go. Oh, there you go.
Guys, with faith-based organizations partnering...
National Faith in Blue Movement, it's about building bridges and strengthening community ties with faith-based organizations partnering with local law enforcement agencies.
All of these churches in our area, as well as the police department and all of the community, showed up today in full force. It just feels so fulfilling and united that we all came together for this cause.
I'm just overwhelmed at the community, that, the generosity as they came forth this morning. And they were filling the boxes with toys. It was just amazing.
Last year, we had the privilege of hosting Faith in Blue, and there were only three churches. But this year has been awesome. There were six churches. And the attendance was great. The food was awesome, the Mexican food, the American food, and of course, the African food.
Our police department, they're all out there in uniform. They brought a car, they brought a spot truck, they brought some equipment, and the kids are having a great time.
I grew up in the City of Apache Junction, so it's very, very awesome to see everyone working together and coming together to support people in need and just working together.
We're really grateful for the Apache Junction Police Department. They are doing an awesome job in keeping us safe. We call on them at any time to come and check on our church here, and they always come. So we really, really are grateful for the partnership we have with them.
It's very, very moving to see a community like this of formerly strangers become friends and to build a bridge between ethnic groups, denominational differences, and our police department.
So it was a, as you can see, it was a successful event. I appreciate you letting us share just a few minutes of talking about this. But we're already in the process of planning for next year and having more churches join us.
Any questions for Chief?
Go ahead. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Well, great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pooley. Matt, a couple of items that Al normally do, some events, right?
Yes, yeah, I have a few announcements that typically Al Bravo does, but in his absence, Brian's asked that I share these with you. Reminder, it's Thanksgiving week, so just a friendly reminder to the public to start thawing your turkeys. And more, secondarily, the offices are closed on Thursday. But there are city departments that are open, of course, police twenty-four seven through our Harley. We thank our men and women in blue, as well as our Parks and Library have various hours throughout the weekend. So you can check our website, ApacheJunctionAZ.gov, for various services that'll be open through the weekend. We have our annual holiday event coming up. December second, mark it on your calendar for the annual holiday event and light parade. All the details are on our homepage, or you can find it on our social media. And we hope to see everyone out there this, this December second. We're also happy to report this past weekend, we had one of two of our annual Household Hazardous Waste Days. Total attendees, you see there on the screen, two hundred and ninety, of which two hundred and thirty-two were city residents. As you may recall, we have an agreement with the county to serve some of the neighboring county residents as well, so they can take advantage of, of this important event. Thanks to Heather Hodgman here in Public Works in the audience tonight, who organizes all this and gets all the volunteers and city staff and works with the contractors to, to make this important event happen every year. And mark your calendars for March ninth, two thousand twenty-four, for the next Household Hazardous Waste event. Check out the Chamber of Commerce website at ajchamber.com for Jingle in the Junction and get in the spirit of the holiday. It's a decorating contest open to all businesses in the area presented by the Chamber of Commerce. And lastly, just a reminder, sign up for our newsletter. You can find it at ApacheJunctionAZ.gov/newsletter for those of you who are interested in getting updates about the city. And that concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, public hearings, consideration of a new Series Six bar liquor license for First Water Cocktail Bar.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. This evening, we are looking at an application for a Series Six bar liquor license. This is a new license for the establishment called First Water Cocktail Bar, located at fifteen forty-five East Broadway Avenue here in Apache Junction. The Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control received the application on October seventeenth. It was forwarded and received in the city clerk's office on October nineteenth. On October thirty-first, the notice of public hearing was posted at the premises, which allows for the twenty-day notices required by state law. The applicant was notified and reminded of tonight's public hearing meeting. I do not see anyone in the audience. Correspondence related to the inspections of the premises for safety and code-compliant matters have been received from the police department, the superstition fire and medical district, building and safety division, as well as planning and zoning. Three of those entities reported back with compliance within the, with the inspection requirements and recommended approval. The building and safety division has recommended denial as the proper permits have not yet been acquired through that department. All these responses were attached in the Legisstar. Tonight, the council can either decide to continue this item for the December fifth council meeting. You can approve the application, or you can simply deny. And if it does go on the continuation for December twelfth, that would be under consent agenda.
Okay.
So I, along with the building and safety, the, the planning, the code enforcement folks also have a stop-work order there as well, so...
There was a stop-work order placed on... That date was on... On November eighth. And at that time, the applicant was contacted, and he said that he would be in touch with the permitting department. And I, as far as I know, there have not been permits pulled yet.
So that stop-work order is still in place?
It is still effective, yes.
Rudy texted me just a minute ago and said that we're just waiting for their architect plans. And for the permit to get...
But still, got it. Yeah, okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Will, you're saying that the continuance would automatically put it on a consent agenda and not bring it back for a normal public hearing?
That is correct, because it is scheduled for the public hearing tonight, and so we would carry through with that.
Is that, is that a state law requirement, Joel, or could we put it on for more...
I think a more advisable thing is to continue it to a date certain with a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then to give the, to give the applicant an opportunity to correct all of these issues.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it'd be the fifth of December.
We can still make it for the fifth of December as far as being a...
You can make a public hearing, or should we do it for the third week of...
No, you make a motion for the fifth, for a public hearing. And I think he'll have the architecture plans by then, and hopefully everything's taken care of.
But he's also asking, could he just do it to the eighteenth?
Oh, you could. There is a deadline to get this done. Otherwise, it's deemed approved, and I believe it's sixty days for the state.
Yes. If we don't put it on the December fifth meeting, then the Department of Liquor would consider this as an... Yes. If we don't put it on the December 5th meeting, then the Department of Liquor would consider this as an approved application and they would go through with that process.
Okay, so we gotta do it the 5th.
So you could always continue the 5th, say he's not ready and he needs more time. But I'd have to look at the deadlines. I don't know when this thing was filed, so. But I think have another public hearing on it gives him plenty of time. I'm sure Rudy will get in touch with him tomorrow saying, hey, you better hurry up. You don't have a lot of time left.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I moved that the application for a Series 6 bar liquor license for First Water Cocktail Bar located at 1545 West Broadway Avenue, Apache Junction, Arizona, be continued to or continued for a public hearing on December 5th.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. Okay. Regional, oops, excuse me. You'll have no old business, so we're doing a new business. Presentation, discussion, and possible consideration and possible resolution number 2325 in intergovernmental agreement with the Phoenix for Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force. Chief Pulli.
Mayor, members of council, this is for me an easy one to just talk about where we need this. It's basically an agreement with the Phoenix Police Department, who is the housed agency that gets all the funding through the Department of Justice, the DOJ, to support investigations that are trying to find and locate those that are using the internet for child pornography or any type of abuse of children. Unfortunately, we see it way too often. We currently are part of this task force, but we have to renew it every five years. Our detective that's assigned to this is actually housed here. They get all the equipment, training reimbursed. And he averages about 50 complaints a year that he has to investigate on child crimes from the internet.
Okay. Any discussions, questions, or should say?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So Chief, it's just strictly internet crimes? That's the focus of this task?
Correct, yeah. You know, with the internet, it's a hub of disgusting things that happen with our kids and our children are victims of this. And you know, there's a lot of really bad individuals out there and that's what, yeah, that's what this is for.
If a situation occurs where someone perpetrates a crime against a child based on their connecting in the internet or something, is that something that you're, I mean, I would say I guess you're able to follow up with that?
Correct, yes. We get tips from the different federal agencies. And this is basically a force multiplier, so if we need more investigative tools here, other agencies will come out here. And we also agree to send our people if they need assistance in other areas as well.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that resolution number 23-35 authorizing the city of Apache Junction to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix Police Department and the Arizona Internet Crime Against Children Task Force be approved.
Second.
Okay, I got a question to ask. Is this 23-35 or is it 25? On my paperwork, it shows 25.
It was just 35.
And the motion says 35.
Yeah, 23.
23-35 is what I show.
Okay, all right, just checking. All right, moved. And do I have a second?
Five seconds.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Presentation, discussion, and possible consideration of an award of contract for library re-roofing, recoding. Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and take this one unless there's questions. We do have Ted Wolf and Heather Hodgman who oversee the contract here. But simply put, because of the recent lease of office space for the police department, we need janitorial services there and this would be action you take to ratify an amended contract that we already had with them to cover janitorial services for the expanded office. So.
The mayor went to the last item, the roofing.
Oh, did I skip the wrong one?
No, no, no. We can continue on with it, can't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So simply put, this would be retroactive approval of the amended agreement that we needed to get in because the lease started November 1st. But we are available for any questions if you do have any.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. I presume adding this on is the $28,800. What do they do for $28,800? Because I can clean toilets for less than that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll invite Heather Hodgman up to address the question.
Oh, we're not on that one?
No, we're not on that one.
Oh, I thought we were doing that one.
That's what he just read.
That's what he just read?
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm using a piece of paper here. It's misdirected me.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Heather, can you answer Councilmember Nesser's question about the janitorial contract?
Of course. It actually is $28,800 is the span of the three years. So it's $1,200 a month is what it ends up being. So it's the cleaning of the restrooms, the vacuuming, the taking the trash, the hours that we're paying for the person that's there, five days a week. So there's a little bit more detail that's, I'm sorry.
That's the amount for three years.
Yeah. I didn't know that. Okay.
So it's five days a week, $1,200 a week?
$1,200 a...
A month.
Yeah, a month.
There's no way.
A month, I'm sorry.
You said $1,200 a month.
No, it's a month. Yeah, $1,200 a month.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So Heather, does that include like floor care, floor maintenance, and waxing and all that kind of thing?
I believe it's just, do they, I haven't looked inside the building. I'm sorry, is it just carpet? Because it'd be carpet cleaning and if there's any mopping or sweeping that's ever needed inside the building itself.
Also to that, one of the biggest things is not just anybody is allowed in there. They all have to go through a background check, which limits a lot of our people that can go in there as well.
Services are similar to what we have here at City Hall. And at some point here in the near term, we'll be able to go out and bid all of our city services again. This is just the current contractor vendor we have now. And we're asking them to take what we've got now added to it, to the existing contract.
And our current person that is in our police department, she's able to actually stand over to the substation. So we're expanding her hours of cleaning as well, so she can clean over there.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. So I'm reading here, we entered into this agreement on September 21st, 2023. Is this the agreement we're amending? Is the one we entered?
But there's been several. So this janitorial service contract has gone through how many amendments, Matt?
We're on the third.
We're on the third amendment, but that...
Since September?
No, that date in September is when we entered into this amendment to the contract.
The lease agreement.
I'm sorry, the lease agreement.
Yeah. So this is for, as of, the third amendment goes back retroactive to November 13th, when the janitorial staff started cleaning the police substation.
So this isn't a case of they won the bidding process, we got the contract signed, and two months later, we're amending it to give them more money?
No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good question.
Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion for this one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Go ahead, Peter.
I move that the third amendment with JB Superior Maintenance Service LLC to add janitorial services for the police substation located at 3880 South Denisa Road, Apache Junction, increasing the annual cost from $300,000 to $328,800 a year be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now I'm gonna do the library roofing.
And Your Honor will invite Ted Wolf up to introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Ted Wolf, Public Works Director. Today, we have, I'm gonna bring Heather back up to speak more closely with the roof reco contract as she's gonna be the one overseeing and administering it.
Formal introduction, Heather Hodgman, Administrative Services Manager. So we typically continues to make sure that our roofing is up to par and make sure the maintenance is done. So this time, we're looking at our library. And the section that we've been talking about, the last time it was done was 10 years ago. So there we have no warranty on it. So any reflecks that might happen, we can't go back to that contractor to have that under warranty. We'd have to pay additional fees. So this is just to do preventative maintenance on the section of the roof. And this picture gives a little bit more explanation. So Section 1 and then the lower, lower 1 through 3, let's see if I can help you. This purplish, this red lower, Section 2 and Section 3 is what the contractor would be re-roofing for the library. You'll see these two sections in the blue and greenish color, those still are under warranty. So we want to make sure that we bring everything up close to in about 10 years that everything will have to be redone at that time.
Mayor? What's the warranty on this if we approve this?
It'll be 10 years.
10 years, okay.
So in conclusion, staff is recommending entering into an agreement with Cinemark Corporation in an amount not to exceed $52,720.25. We are using a cooperative contract with Mohave, which is contract number 18R-CTMK0418. Any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can you go back one slide, please? So over here, the warranty expires 2035, down here, 2034. Did Mohave do those roof, that roof as well?
Yes.
So did they give us a longer than 10-year warranty on that roof?
These ones, they had done 20 years. These ones were a different type of coating. And they had only done this asphalt-type roofing for 10. We didn't want to go past that. They could have given us 20 years on those three sections. But then we would have been trying to figure out who's here and when is 20 years up? And we just kind of wanted to make sure we were bundling them closer together. So we're aware of all of our roofing is going to be budgetary wise to make it easier.
We gave up 10 years of warranty so they'd be closer together?
No, it would have cost, it would still cost more and it was a decision by our building and maintenance supervisor to do 10 years. So that we can, in 10 years, if I'm gone, I don't know if we would remember when the warranty ends and they could come back and want to redo it and we'd be wasting our tax dollars.
So are they not using the same material as they used on these other roofs?
No, so this, the blue and the green are the original library building. These other sections are the expansion. So with the contractor, I'm not sure why they chose a different asphalt roofing in the expansion versus the original library itself.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
We're on this picture here where it says Section 3 Roof. What is that roof there that has nothing?
This right here?
Correct.
It's some metal roofing area.
That's your metal roof?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the agreement with Cinemark Corporation for the library roof recoding in the amount of $52,720.75 using the Mohave contract number 18R-CTMK0418 be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Since we don't have any direction to staff or selection of meetings over and above what's the next one in December, a call to the public. I'd like to remind everyone, the call to public is a courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been filled out and completed and handed into city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, council cannot engage in a discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism, may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place the matter on a future agenda for a council's discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Okay. Kathleen Meek?
Hi there, Mayor, City Council, Catherine Meek, 1327 South Bel Air Road in Apache Junction and also from the Superstition Museum. Our booklets for this year, the schedules are now out, hot off the presses. This weekend after Thanksgiving, we're going to be having our holiday, our first holiday boutique. We have vendors out. Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be in the Apacheland Barn on Saturday and Sunday. Our hours are 9 to 4. I'm not sure when Mr. and Mrs. Claus are showing up, but they stopped by last week and said they will be in town for that. Sunday also, in honor, well, Small Business Day is Saturday for shopping. Sunday, the museum has 25% off all the jewelry. So if you're interested in some of the Four Peaks Amethyst jewelry or the San Carlos Peridot, we've got some and it's really pretty. So welcome, come on out.
Thank you. Donna Carr?
Hi, Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. It was a couple months ago that I had brought up the fact about the water and the hormones in the water. I was talking to a head of one of the water companies and he had mentioned is that it's not just the hormones, he says. It's the medications that people take. So I guess I don't want to take a cardiac medication if I don't need to coming out of my tap water. So you might want to finish checking into that. I thought maybe it's been a couple months I hear anything about it. And the other thing is I was reading something about these guys are gonna put up the streetlights. And I thought we were gonna stay dark. And if you do put up streetlights, can you make them low, really low? And the other thing is, is a suggestion, I know these guys picked a color on Filberto's on Idaho there. And I was just thinking is, there's not much left of the older part of Apache Junction. I think the old Basher's building is probably one of the last ones that's around that's pretty old. If you could have any of the construction in the older parts of Apache Junction, look more towards westernized style because we were a mining town. And that's all I get to say. Thanks.
Excuse me. Jane Brown?
Jane Brown, Jane Brown Valvista Road, Apache Junction. Thank you for letting me speak, and happy Thanksgiving. I really appreciate the fact that Sergeant Southard is gonna get a commendation, but I just want to emphasize that this was a five-man special ops helicopter crew. All of them were special ops. He was the youngest, he was 27, next oldest was 32. These are the warriors of the warriors that we lost. This is a big deal that that bird went down. So when he gets his commendation, I mean, these are the men that would have gone on to be generals. These are just elite warriors. So, thank you. The other thing I wanted to say is 279 houses are going in, am I too loud? I'm not too loud, okay. And I think it's called Radiance, 279 homes. Now, those 279 families might want to have dark skies. And if you look at the schematics for the streetlights, they're gonna be 4,000 lumens. Well, our low headlights are 750 lumens, our brights are 1,200. 4,000 lumens go 40 yards, depending on the type of light that's actually used. That might, with those houses stacked so close together, those streetlights might be going in people's bedrooms. And what if these people really want to be dark? Maybe that's why they're coming to AJ. So how about just putting the electricity out for them, you know, getting it all stumped out, but not putting in the lights until the 279 homes can vote if they want lights. And the other thing about the lighting was, this agreement eliminates any energy production, which means these might not be able to be solar. Thank you.
Andrea Meek?
Andre.
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 I'm gonna get it right one day.
Good evening, council, mayor, and I'll still vote for you, mayor. Whether you get it right or not. Boy, no fiery subjects to comment on tonight. So basically, just, you know, it's Thanksgiving week, and you know, there's gonna be a lot of people out there, you know, homeless and or shelterless, however you want to put it these days, you know, that are gonna get a good meal. But, you know, they eat more than once a day, or once a week, I should say, once a year. Yes, so, you know, everybody needs to be constantly trying to help people that have less than you. And, you know, just because they don't have a house to live in doesn't mean that they're bad people. It just means that our lifestyle has gone beyond what they can afford, and so they're left without much. And as far as streetlights, you know, I see Southern, you know, on the Mesa side, they got those streetlights that are like 40 feet up in the air, and they seem to do okay with them. And lighting has come, you know, a long way. When I lived in San Diego, they went from the white lights to a yellow light to cut down on light pollution. And, you know, it worked pretty well, except when you were driving down the street, you know, all the lights were yellow. Every time it changed, you know, so, you know, kind of freaked you out when you were driving. And, but, yeah, you know, it's, the dark skies, I think we need to preserve that. And so I think, you know, lighting should be looked at really, you know, really hard as far as what type we use. You know, it's gonna be LED because that's the way, but there's many ways of going LED, you know, it's cheap to run. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
No.
All right, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.